Mr. McQueen.
Present.
Warden Halliday?
Here.
Ms. Patterson?
Present.
Mr. McQueen sends his regrets. Ms. Clumpus?
Here.
Mr. Greenfield?
Present.
Mr. Body?
Here.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Ms. Fosbrook?
Present.
Mr. Woodbury?
Here.
Mr. McKean?
Present.
Ms. Ardell?
In attendance.
Mr. Echols?
Touted for it.
Mr. Bell?
Present.
Thank you for that. Okay, moving on, we have the Declaration of Bikini Interest. Anybody has it now or declare it later if they need be? Seeing none, we move on to the adoption of the minutes. And A is the minutes of the County Council Meeting Committee, the whole meeting dated June the 28th, 2018, and the resolutions contained therein be adopted as presented. On the floor, please, Counselor McQueen, Second Counselor Barfoot. Any discussion on those minutes? Call the motion, all in favor? The motions are passed. B is that the Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting Minutes dated June the 28th, 2018, be adopted as provided to County Council. On the floor, please, Counselor Burley, Second Counselor Bell. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Number C, long-term care, that the minutes of the Long-Term Care Committee of Management Meeting dated July the 4th, 2018, and the resolutions contained therein be adopted as presented. On the floor, Counselor Barfoot, Second or Counselor Wright? Any discussion on those minutes? Yes, Counselor? John?
I believe that this is the one where we're supposed to pick the options, one, two, or three, or was it?
That's coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's just, remember that, okay. All in favor? Yeah, Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I noted that the meeting, the Committee of Management meeting previous to this one, the subsequent meeting was not noted as scheduled, so generally, next meeting will be this date. The minutes from the June 12th meeting said to be called at a later date. And I'm just wondering, have we diverted from the, what seemed to be a trend of Tuesday meetings? Because, you know, I'd like to attend as much as possible and...
Okay, I understand the question. Maybe the Chair, Counselor Burley, will...
...bring for explanation.
We had some minor difficulty of getting the committee together, so we had to change to a different date, is why we did it. And we will try to stick to the normal Tuesday meeting.
Well, thank you for that. And again, I just remind the group that I think that it would be highly appropriate if we could video-record those meetings. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. D, that the Long-Term Care Committee of Management Closed Meetings, Meeting Minutes, dated July the 4th, 2018, be adopted as provided to County Council. On the floor, with Counselor Burley, Counselor Greenfield, seconding. Any discussion on those? All in favor of this motion? Motion is carried. Okay, the reports. First one, that the Board of Health report dated June the 22nd, 2018, be received for information. Put that on the floor, Counselor Barfoot. Second or by Counselor McKean, Maggie? Any questions? Any discussion? Dr. Era, oh, sorry, I didn't see you. Usually you give us a little bit of an oversight. Do you want to do that?
Certainly. I was just waiting for the motion and the call on me to go on with the, with the report.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Warden and Council. So, the June 22nd, 2018, Board Meeting was, there was no quorum. A Board Member was called away the last minute, so no motions were passed, but the agenda items were received, and they included a presentation on sexual health services for teens. So, the delivery of services in our area and in the province in general have been having different changes, most notably of which was the OHIP Plus that would change access to certain drugs, and certain changes in, in the local context of delivery of service as well. So, our focus has been on a priority population, and we will continue to monitor, conduct local assessment of services and explore options to reduce transport, transportation barriers. We will continue to facilitate connections that are teen-friendly and interventions that are teen-friendly. Partners for no-cost testing and birth control ensure safe space for access of services, increase awareness among us, amongst priority populations. So, that was the gist of the change and the report on sexual health services. There was one correspondence that the Board received since they already endorsed on March 23rd, 2018. It came from Perth County Board of Health, and it supports a call for repeal of Section 43 of the Criminal Code of Canada to provide children the same protection from physical assault as that is given for adults. Then, the MOH report, MOH report was on cannabis. I delivered the report to the Board, and it had the main highlight of up-to-date status of cannabis legislation, access to cannabis, and risk associated with the use, and a list of initiatives that are underway in Gray Bruce Health Units, internal and external, and the most notable of which, Cannabis Legislation Working Group has been established under the umbrella of Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy. The Gray Bruce is a member of the Ontario Public Health Collaborative on cannabis. And Gray Bruce Health Unit is acknowledged user, participant, participant in the 2018 Local Drive Collaborative Project. The internal initiatives included formation of Internal Emergency Issue Cannabis Working Group, a staff newsletter called C-Scope to keep everyone informed of the up-to-dates, explore the possibility of online cannabis learning model, and having a presence on Facebook and Twitter. For program reports, there were two reports. The first one is Provincial Election Ensuring Health in All Policies. And it's just a report of the recent provincial election and the importance of health in all policy approach to be an opportunity to remind all candidates in the election of the importance of actions and bylaws and laws that, sorry, bylaws and laws that could affect health. The second report was on Sexual Health Rapid Review, and it's related to the presentation that I mentioned earlier. And the goal of it was to anticipate trends and issues related to sexual health of teens in Gray Bruce, identify existing sexual health services accessible to teens, identify strengths and gaps in sexual health services, and make recommendations for enhancing access to sexual health services. There were six news releases that addressed important subjects like safety in kids and support of Ontario smokers who wish to quit. Financial reports included reports up to April 30th, and the mandatory programs were in surplus of about $550,000. This is expected to be utilized by the end year with the new hires and enhancement of the program. And the program funding increase of 2% will be updated in the next budget and presented to the Board. Under Other Businesses, there is a list of Alpha Initiatives and Resolutions. The list includes sustainable funding for local public health in Ontario, public health support for a minimum wage that is a living wage, public health roles in food affordability surveillance, extending the Ontario pregnancy and breastfeeding nutritional allowance, comprehensive approach to infection prevention and control IPAC. For the building roof updates, the roof is virtually complete. The only remaining metal flushing and trim remains touches to be able to get the 30-year warranty, and it is in, in the making. There is a discussion that is ongoing with the contractor with regard to invoking a penalty clause as a result of the delay. The, the project should have been finished in March, and there has been some delays from their side, from the contractor's side. And, Mr. Warden, last time I was here, there was a question about sharing the draft audit report from the Ministry. We communicated with the Ministry, and their preference to provide the complete report at the end since it is still in term and in changing status.
Thanks for getting back on that.
Thank you.
Any questions of Dr. Era? Yes, Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. You mentioned child protection as opposed to adults and something to do with Perth?
Correct.
Could you elaborate on that?
Certainly. So, the Section 43 of the Criminal Code still allows parents to punish kids with physical punishment, which is something that some of our health units in the province looked at and wanted to repeal.
And so Perth has taken a position on that?
Correct. And the Board endorsed that position on March 23rd, 2018, the Board of Health.
Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Era, for coming. Next one to be put forward is Long-Term Care, that Report LTCRC-CC 2618, Long-Term Care Management Services be received, and that the current independent contractor agreement with Sienna Living be amended to reflect the execution of the management contract for all three homes in order to achieve accreditation and realize efficiencies and service quality improvements. And that a bylaw be brought forward for Council's consideration, and that the Warden and Clerk be authorized to execute any documents and agreements required by this approval. And that the Council consider and provide direction on one of the follow funding, following funding options. Option one, that the cost for a full-service management contract be prorated for the remainder of 2018 and funded from each of the homes' respective reserves, and that the cost for future years be included in the, in the respective homes' operating budgets, and that any surpluses from long-term care operations and/or any corporate surpluses that have been, that have no required specific department needs realized in 2018 budget year be used to repay the respective reserves used to fund this full-service management contract in 2018. And option two, that the cost for full-service management contract be prorated for the remainder of 2018 and funded from each of the homes' respective reserves, and that for 2019 budget year, 25% of the 2019 management contract be cost be funded from taxation and the remaining balance be funded from the Administration Pay Equity Reserve, and that any surpluses from long-term care operations and/or corporate surpluses that have no required specific departmental needs realized in the 2018, 2019 budget years be used to repay the respective reserves used to fund this full-service management contract in 2018 and 2019. Option three, that the cost for a full-service management contract be prorated for the remainder of 2018 and funded from each of the homes' respective reserves, and that for 2019 budget year, that $400,000 of the $1,361,010 in taxation funding contained in the 2018 budget as transferred to reserve for long-term care redevelopment be utilized to fund full-service management contract, and that the remaining balance be funded from the Administration Pay Equity Reserve, and that any surpluses from long-term care operations and/or any corporate surpluses that have no required specific departmental needs realized in the 2018, 19 budget years be used to repay the respective reserves used to fund this full-service management contract in 2018 and 2019. Put that, motion, put that on the floor. Counselor Pringle, Second Counselor Bell. Yes, Lynn and Kevin will come and review the report that, that's for this particular project here.
Good morning, Mr. Warden and County Council. This report is, that I provided in this package is a summary of the report that went forward to the Committee of Management. As we've spoke about over the last year or two, long-term care has grown, it's fast-moving, it's increased complexity, more legislation, more scrutiny than ever before. Overall, we have a budget in excess of $31 million when you include what we receive from the Ministry, as well as the county resident pay and that type of thing, and we have more than 475 employees. There's really been no real change in how we've administered or looked after long-term care over the last 12 years, despite the new legislation and the public reporting of indicators and all that type of thing. And one of the recommendations that were passed were to enter into Management Consulting Services contract. In August of 2017, we went out on an RFP, and Sienna Senior Living was a successful proponent, and the county entered into a five-year agreement that started February 1st of this year. It included the completion of an operational review as part of the stepping stones to figure out where do we go. At that time, Management Consulting Services were determined upon complete, were to be determined, sorry, were to be determined, once the operational review was completed, and in consideration of what the recommendations from that operational review were. Sienna Senior Living, the executive team presented to the Committee of Management on June 12th and provided an overview of the key findings. Overall, it showed that while Gray County is committed to service quality, employee satisfaction, there were inconsistencies and disconnects within the operation that hampered efforts to achieve the desired results. The report makes extensive recommendations that would improve service quality, address efficiencies, deficiencies, and offer opportunities for savings and operational efficiencies. Given the findings, staff went away, reviewed it in further detail, and came back to Committee Management on July 4th, and we presented three different options. One would be a full management contract, the other was a partial management contract, and the third option was a status quo. At that meeting, there was great debate and discussion, and the Committee recommended the full implementation of a management contract, and directed staff at that time to provide options to fund the cost of the service to County Council for consideration and direction. With a full management contract, Gray County will maintain ownership of the beds, and staff will continue to be Gray County employees. Just a brief overview of what, how they went about the operational review, they really looked at four strategic pillars: financial, quality, human resources, and the operating platform. And these are, these pillars are necessary for a good, strong foundation in which to operate long-term care. Under financial, they really looked at realigning financial controls, implementing some changes, and increasing the ability at the home level to make timely decisions in relationship to monthly variances that the homes might experience. It really looked at support for budgeting, capital, and envelope management. As I said, it's a very large budget, very complex, with various streams of funding coming in, and it's not getting simpler. And when you look at the reporting requirements that are report, that we have to give back to the Ministry, it's not just in the homes, it impacts a lot of departments within the organization to complete those functions. Under quality, we do have a quality management program in place, but they identified several inconsistencies. We really need a coordinated program to standardize the methodology, monitor the activities that we're carrying out based on risk and priorities. And a lot of them, there's risk and priorities that we have internally, and there's also provincial requirements and priorities in which we have to be continually adjusting to meet. Human resources, that is one of the biggest drivers of our costs. An engaged, satisfied team leads to great outcomes, and this is an area that we really are working hard, and we've been working hard, well, probably 30 years in long-term care, trying to address this, and it's getting more challenging, especially with the staffing shortages, recruitment, retention, and increased requirements for specific trained skills in order to work in our homes. Sienna identified that we need a consistent recruitment and onboarding process. How do we streamline it? Last year, I had completed some numbers, and we hired over 75 employees. And when you consider we're duplicating that service, we're trying to figure out what works best, how do we get people in, and it is really tough when we don't have people that are dedicated to look after these types of things. Staff communication, that's one of the things that we always hear, whether it be communication, you know, at this level or at the home level, communication is a tough thing, and how do we manage that and do it effectively and consistently? A strong occupational health and safety program, tools to support absenteeism and WSIB management, were all key things that are needed in order to move ahead. Operating platform. Common systems, processes and routines, consistent implementation of policies, streamlined purchasing practices, documentation management, those are just a few things that they identified under operating platforms that we could streamline in order to make things better. What we really struggle with is the research, policy development, implementation, monitoring of best practices for long-term care. Things are being developed regularly, and we do not have the depth within our organization to be pulling that together to make sure that we're meeting the standards. Under deliverables, a representative from Sienna will collaborate with Committee of Management, and they really talk highly about a partnership. This isn't Sienna running the show. This is Gray County, will still maintain the beds, the staff, and we have a responsibility, when I say we, I mean the collective we, we have a responsibility to operate long-term care, and it is important that it's operated to the best of all our ability. The Sienna designate would respond, liaison and speak with the Committee of Management and staff. Big decisions, decisions that impact the county, impact finances, that type of thing would definitely be coming back, and it would be regular communications. It is anticipated that it would take two years of the contract to implement the approved changes and to fully implement the practices. Years three to five would be consulting on a three-year strategic plan, how do we keep things moving ahead, sustaining improvements, and really looking at what the quality indicators have been, how did we get there, and how do we keep things moving in the right direction? Financial efficiencies are expected in that three-year timeframe as well. Additional revenue will be received when accreditation is attained, and cost savings from volume and group purchasing are anticipated, and that will further enhance our ability for financial offsets. Legal and legislative requirements, there is a section of the Long-Term Care Service Accountability Agreement that identifies the responsibilities if we work with a partner. And one of the key things we thought was the fact that the LIN can come in and audit at any time, the contractors' work, just as they can audit our work, they can audit their work. Provincially, there is a requirement under the Long-Term Care Homes Act that the Ministry has to approve any contract, and Sienna would, is a vendor of record with the Ministry, and once the contract has been signed, it would have to go then to the Ministry for approval at that point. The county solicitor has been consulted regarding the independent contractor agreement, and we do have an agreement currently in place that allows for extension upon mutual agreement. Under financial and resource implications, and this is where I'll call upon Kevin, there was quite a bit of discussion around how does a project like this get funded, how, what are the impacts, and I'll let him speak to those.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thanks, Lynn. Yeah, there was a discussion at the Committee of Management on several options were thrown out, and staff was directed back to bring back some options here. So, in the report, I've, we provided three options. The first option, and these are in the table, I found on page 36 of the report, is that first option, it, it shows that for the first year of 2018, that the prorated amount of that full management contract being about $468,000 be funded from each of the long-term care reserves. Then, in 2019, that the full, the full-year management contract of just about $1.1 million, that would be funded all from taxation. And then go forward, we just put proposed 2020 in here, and it's not indicated in the motion because we just feel that's getting a little far out, and we'd like to see what results come from the full management contract, et cetera. But you would see that if, if that was the case, that $1.1 million would already be built into the tax rate, and there'd be, other than any other costs that we're, we're not aware of, you shouldn't see an increase in go-forward in your budget years. Option two is, is taking a phase-in approach on taxation, so the 2018, the first year again, is being funded from each of the long-term care reserves. Then, we build in 25% of that management contract, being about $281,000 from tax, and with the balance in in 2019, being funded from an Administration Pay Equity Reserve. That was a reserve that was established actually for a long-term care pay equity settlement. Those were settled in 2017. And so, that, that funding is sitting there, that, so they could be utilized. Then again, in the, in the 2020, we're looking at possibly another $281,000 in tax, and then the balance in, we're hoping that they find increased revenues and decreased expenditures, and that would make up the full management contract at that time. Option three, again, 2018, from each of the long-term care reserves, and then utilizing a portion of the long-term care redevelopment. So, right now, those, when those two debentures for Lee Manor were matured and we paid them all off, that money's been being transferred into a reserve for the redevelopment of a long-term care at Rockwood Terrace. And we're showing that based on what has been, the numbers we've been provided for construction costs per bed and stuff, that, that total $1.3 million would not be used. So, I'm showing here that you could take $400,000 that's currently built into that tax rate of that $1.3 million, and utilize it to, to offset some of the management costs. And the 2019, showing $400,000, and the rest would come from the Administrative Pay Equity Reserve. And then, in 2020, if we see, saw the savings in that reserve, then it would leave a little bit in taxation that would have to be a result of $162,000. So, those are the three options that we've put forth here. I guess there could be others as well, but those were the, the three, the kind of the themes that come out of the Committee of Management. So, those are what we've presented here, so.
Thank you, Kevin. Pictures and the charts are, are very helpful in understanding, you know, the, the numbers, so when you see them in a chart form. So, there's three options there. So, open the floor to, to discussion and questions of Kevin? And Lynn? Yeah, John, Counselor McKean.
Thank you, Warden Halliday. I guess that, I see the options of, then this is for the full management that the Committee had come up with. I guess I'm troubled that there is no, there isn't any costing of what partial management and what those, what that would have brought to the table. And I'm, I'm just thinking that an expenditure that's as big as this towards taxation or, or taking it out of any reserve, let alone, I see there's some mention of, you know, anything corporately being put toward this. I think that we should have been brought a, a costing of what a partial management scheme would have been, so we could have made that determination as to what we would rather have seen, especially to what the cost to the taxpayers are.
Thanks, John. That was discussed, and Lynn, you may...
Yes.
Explain what the results were at Long-Term Care Management Committee on that option? Because we did ask that question.
Yes, partial management was discussed. It's about half the cost. The challenge with a partial management agreement would not provide the human resources or additional supports to carry out or sustain the changes in a timely manner. or additional supports to carry out or sustain the changes in a timely manner. We would not be able to achieve accreditation on this next cycle through, because, again, we don't have the resources in order to carry out those things. What it would do is it would provide some enhanced manuals to us, update some of our operating platforms, that type of thing, but it doesn't actually put the resources in place.
Counselor McKean.
Okay, well, thanks for that explanation, although I would say that, you know, we've heard this, you know, about the accreditation and what the savings would be. Has there been any estimate of what the accreditation will be to be able to offset this?
The accreditation is a small portion of it, it's about forty thousand dollars, so it's a small portion. What it also, though, does provide is it provides, that brings the standards up to a level that they have to be, and it allows us to line things up in order to obtain some other efficiencies. We've done some looking at contracts that we have in place, and, if you can just bear with me for a minute here. In looking at Sienna, they have approximately a hundred different products scoped with standard specification sheets to assist with purchasing, three-hundred-and-twenty active contracts, just to give an example of the scope of products which we'll have access to and be able to purchase. So, a lot of savings will be offset through purchasing. Other things such as when we look at WSIB management, attendance management, those types of programs are where we're expected to see substantial savings as well.
Yes, John?
Well, I guess that, I'm sorry, but I can't understand spending a half a million dollars to get forty thousand back, I don't see where that's a whole lot of benefit to the taxpayers. I'm trying, I'm strictly doing it by the numbers, but to me, it looks like we need to have another look at some funding of this, because to me, that doesn't sound like a very good use of taxpayers' dollars.
I'll let the CEO maybe make a comment on them, but you'll see in the 2020, we are starting to feel or project five-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars in savings, and so that would be only achieved by doing a full contract. And on top of, I'm not sure whether that forty thousand is included, and that probably is, but that may be the gross amount. So, you can start to see the savings will start to move forward as Sienna starts to work with us, we get the benefit of their expertise in purchasing, and so that's, it was like a one-stop in 2019, but you can see the results are projected going forward. And there is success that Sienna have had, and we've talked to City of Cothell Lakes, and their cost per bed today, when our cost, let's say, is fourteen thousand dollars a bed extra, they reduced theirs down to six thousand per bed over a six-year period. So, it does take a while, but it is, and I would like Kim to speak maybe, and do you want to speak first, Lynn?
I was going to say too, what we haven't discussed is the cost of maintaining compliance, and that is something that you can't really put a dollar figure on it, you have to attain it. If you don't meet compliance, there are definite costs, and the ministry has recently introduced new legislation for repeat non-compliances, where they start to fine staff, and the fines do roll up to the county as well. So, compliance is a little more evasive in order to say what that cost is, but we do have to meet compliance, and that is a big part of this whole management contract as well.
And CEO, do you want to have a...
I don't know if I have anything really specific to add, other than to kind of reiterate what's been said, which is that we did have some extensive conversations with Sienna, with City of Cothell Lakes, around where they saw opportunities for efficiencies and savings. However, it was our understanding as staff that, you know, really that the critical factor here was a drive towards quality, to make sure that we were running as an efficient and effective home for the residents in our long-term care facilities as we could. Sienna believes, and we believe, that within the term of this contract, there can be sufficient savings that we're essentially netting to zero. We can't commit completely to that, because there will be innumerable decisions brought back through the Long-Term Care Committee of Management and to this council about people's comfort level in taking a particular decision. Some things will be fairly straightforward, other things may be more challenging. There will be, you know, changes in all aspects of the operation. If the decision is taken at that time not to pursue a particular course of action, then at that time, you're also foregoing those potential savings. But we wanted to make sure that everyone was engaged in the conversation and in the decision-making. Sienna's going to bring the information to the table, so that you're aware of what your opportunities are, but some of those things, we wanted to make sure that you still had the opportunity to consider them, consider the impacts, and weigh in on that.
Thanks for that. Your questions, yes, Anne Marie Frostbrook?
So, following this discussion and resolution, we're going to go into closed session, and it appears that we're going to be reviewing and discussing the actual agreement. Is that correct?
Sorry, the CEO, I'd like to make a comment.
I'm still working with legal on the agreement. I think with direction from this council, I had an initial conversation with legal regarding the template contract that was sent. Once we've had a decision from this council, then we will be able to actually negotiate on the basis of your direction this morning, to make sure that final version of the contract is aligned with how you're directing me to act.
So, we're not going into closed?
We don't need to go into closed.
We don't need to go into closed? Okay, so, Counselor Frostbrook, continue.
So, had I not asked that, what I've been, based on what I have in front of me here, my assumption was we were going in closed session. So, we're not going in closed session, and that decision was made...
We have the opportunity to go into closed session, if there's something that you would like to ask that's of a confidential nature, we have that ability.
So, was this put on the agenda in the event that we wanted to go into closed session, or you thought we were, and then subsequently determined that we wouldn't?
Given what has taken place in some of the things that were raised in earlier meetings, we were trying to make sure that the allowance was there to have closed session discussions when they were ready, without having to amend the agenda.
It's there as an option.
Fair enough. If I may, Mr. Warden, so the resolution, the lengthy resolution, my interpretation is that we are in fact approving an agreement. That's what we're doing in this resolution.
That's right.
So, we're approving an agreement that we haven't seen, and when will we see what we're approving?
Valid question.
That couldn't be brought back to the next council meeting?
It can be.
For your information. We're really up against a deadline here, again, with the July twenty-seventh, the lame duck piece, as well, right? So, we wanted to make sure, that's why this is here today, to get your direction, so that I can finish the negotiations with Sienna and with legal.
But we could, if you have questions of financial matters and things, you could go in closed just as easily.
And certainly, if you have questions regarding the nature of some of the clauses in the contract, for example, the fact that there's an ability for either party to exit the contract with no penalties on six months' notice, things like that, that we're working through at this time, but as I say, it's not finalized yet.
Okay, so, that's being clear, so you want to continue on discussing maybe the options, or...
Well, I just want to finish off by saying that, based on this resolution, and the clause that reads that the warden and clerk be authorized to execute any documents and agreements required by this approval. I mean, I interpret that to mean that we might never see this again, and again, my concern is that my vote is required, I am accountable, this is a huge issue, and I'm just not comfortable making blind approvals and last-minute and...
Why don't we bring it back, then? This is the way the recommendation was drafted, but we're certainly open to any amendments. The recommendation already needs to be amended to reflect which option is the preferred one. We also need to provide an amendment based on my most recent conversations with legal with regard to expressly noting that this is a single source, and so there are amendments that need to be considered in any case if we wish to amend this particular clause. And I think what we would want to say there is that the agreement and a bylaw be brought forward for council's consideration, and we can simply strike clause four from this resolution this morning. Would that be acceptable?
I'm somewhat at a loss. Staff makes recommendations, and then we have to figure out how they fit, and then you can alter recommendations, but I need to make a motion, so you know what? Whatever.
Well, I think that, in all due respect, the CEO suggested that the negotiations with Sienna through legal is still in, still being discussed, so therefore, you're absolutely right that we shouldn't be approving something that hasn't been finalized. So, I think the CEO's recommendations are valid, you know. So, that being said, I think we'll set up that amendment, and someone can bring that forward, you may want to bring it forward and get a second, or, and that would amend that section, but we still have a discussion on the options that we have to have a look at. So, would you be prepared to make a motion on that amendment that's being...
If you could just...
Yeah, well, let's get it up on the screen, and then we'll look for a second, and then bring that forward as an amendment. Counselor, so, well, let's get that up, we're just, we're working on that, and Counselor Barfoot had his hand up for a comment, and then so did Counselor Ardell, so...
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I guess I use this analogy at the committee meeting, and you can take it for whatever it's worth, but I take long-term care in Gray County somewhat like fixing your car. You can go buy parts, you can pull it up on the lawn, you can change parts, and you can try to fix it, you can phone a friend, and they can come and try and give you a hand. At the end of the day, you're probably going to end up going to an authorized dealer to have it fixed and fixed right. So, I use the same analogy with this, that you end up going to Sienna, somebody that's an expert in the field, and somebody that's going to fix your problem. So, that's the reason that I supported it at the committee, is that it's time we got out of trying to play in this business and not know the final results, and bring in an expert that's going to get us on the path that we want to go.
Thanks for that, and Counselor Ardell has the next...
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess I look at this definitely coming from the childcare industry. If I were to hire a full-service management team, I think I would be going to Florida and staying there, and they would be running my centers for me. I wouldn't have a job. So, I guess I thought we were going in camera as well, so I won't...
You still can.
Okay, I just won't talk about individual employees or whatever, but I would, I agree, it's like the childcare business, you have to know what you're doing, because it changes daily with the government, and you've got to be on top of it. And I look at this, if this is going to be making the long-term care accredited, that's what we need to do. But that was my job in my businesses for many, many years, and I had to be on top of the game plan. And so, I look at this, if we're, it's going to be like a franchise, you know, you follow all the rules and regulations that Sienna's doing, and they come in and they have their offices there, because they need to have their offices there, what are the rest of the individuals going to be doing? So, I have some concerns, too.
Okay, those are good questions, we can deal with them. In camera, and Counselor Echols, you have some...
So, the question is, is Sienna a player, or are they a coach?
I would say it's a team, in that sense, that we will be provided with the tools, the resources, the experts in specific avenues, whether that be clinical care, nutritional care, programs, finance, whatever that is, they'll be working with our managers, our managers will be part of their leadership team meetings to understand and learn what the standards are, to make sure that consistent piece is out there. So, they are leading and providing that direction to our staff to make sure we're following those procedures. There will also be auditing processes put in place that are done locally, as well as their consultants and their partners will be conducting those same audits, because it's as important for Sienna to be successful as us, right? It's a ministry that comes in at the end of the day and says whether we've met the standard or not, and our aim is to meet the standard.
So, they're a player. I would suggest we go into closed session right now. I'll make a motion to move to closed.
Well, we have an amendment that's on the floor, so...
Not on the floor, I don't think it's been even seconded yet.
All right, okay. So, you want to move into closed?
I'll move it, I'll request that we move into closed session.
Motion to go in closed by Counselor Echols, second, or Counselor Ardell? All in favor? So, there is the amendments on, as prepared by staff. Do I have a mover for that amendment? Counselor Burley, do I have a second, or Counselor Body? All right, so that motion is there? Any further discussions on that motion?
Do we need the option now?
Or unless you're going to bring forward another amendment?
I think we need to...
You want to...
If you can put the decision to option, I think it's forward here, and then it was just...
Yes, we need to decide how we're going to fund this challenge, so that could be, maybe we'll take the break, because that could be more than thirty seconds.
To not, as you can see in the report, to not put too fine a point on it, you have three options. One is to fund it entirely from the levy, one is to fund a portion of it from the levy, and the remainder from the pay equity reserve. We have settled all of our pay equity responsibilities, we do have access to these resources that have not been allocated to another home. Or the third option there, which looks to pay equity and also the long-term care redevelopment fund, and the bottom line of that particular one is for these 2018 and 2019, we're not suggesting there be any impact to the levy. So, you've got all a little bit no impact to the levy. This council is certainly, 2018 budget and any adjustments therein are certainly your responsibility. Staff anticipate that you would be making recommendations about what the budget should look like for 2019. Kevin was good enough to put in and, you know, take it through to 2020, even though that would be really entirely the purview of the next council to decide what they want to do in that year. These are just, we just wanted to spin it out that much further so they saw.
Yes, Counselor Burley.
Option one is the only one that keeps county council open and transparent. We're not really hiding anything, we're showing everything in the cost of what's going to cost for long-term care.
Well, okay, that's, I would say that that's a fact, however, there's another fact that staff are referencing, the pay equity reserve, which is at a million and a half dollars, which has been obtained from the levy, which is now considered redundant. So, we do have reserve of one and a half million dollars sitting there that has been raised from the taxpayers, that could be used towards getting started in this program. Yes, and their staff are recommending that we sort of phase it in perhaps.
I'm just looking at the motion that I seconded, I wonder if we can remove the options from that vote on the amendment that changes the upper part separately, because if somebody moves option one and we don't all agree, we can go through the options until we get one.
That's fine, good recommendation, sir. Thank you. Okay, so, there's the option that, or the amendment that's being brought forward by Counselor Burley and Counselor Body. I'm going to ask if there's any further discussion on that amendment. Counselor Frostbrook?
Could I just ask clerk to read that for the sake of the record?
Sure.
The above resolution be amended to state that the agreement and a bylaw be brought forward for council's... forward for council's consideration, that Clause Four be removed, and a clause be added to state that the council approves single sourcing of a long-term care managed services agreement with CNS Center Living.
And if I may, so when we say remove Clause Four, which one is that? Is that the warden and clerk?
Yes.
So...
Through the bylaw and agreement with the amendment to state that the agreement and bylaw be brought forward for council's consideration. If council approves those, that gives the warden and clerk authorization then to execute those agreements.
Okay, so is it the clerk's interpretation that this resolution, as amended, grants approval of the agreement?
No.
No, it grants approval for the agreement and the bylaw to be brought back for council's review. Thank you.
That's the purpose of it. It's not finalized yet. Okay, all in favor of the amendment? Amendments carried. So let's take the five-minute break, and then we can talk about options. Weather's nice in here today. Hey, I think we can, Counselor Body may be returning shortly. Counselor Pringle, Counselor Body. Thank you, sirs. Thank you, Kevin. So we've got, the amendment passed. Now we're going to have a look to decide on funding options, if that be the, there's three options prevented by, presented by, in the report. Other, as stated, other options could be made available, so we need to, do we need to put a motion on? The main motion, as amended, where, so in other words, we can entertain a discussion from any of the counselors, and then we may, we may end up having some sort of vote afterwards. But anyhow, so there's three, there's three options there, or an alternate that you may bring forward. So if I open the floor to a discussion on options. Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I was just wondering if we could hear from our Director of Finance which option he has recommended, or has a recommendation of, please?
Thank you, Kevin.
I tried to run out of the room before, but, this is my own personal thought on this, and council can do what they wish, but the first option is saying, okay, this is what the cost of it is, and we're going to fund it from tax, all from tax. And to me, 1.1 million represents a 2% tax increase. Council just received a 10-year forecast showing 1.47 for capital in 2019. I think to, an incoming council in 2019, seeing a 3.5% tax increase in the first year, would not look lightly upon what council or what staff have done. So then my head moves into, let's phase this somehow. And so that's why I look at, I like Option Two, in my mind, let's phase a portion of this in and see what results come from Sienna over the next couple, you know, you've got six months roughly of 2018. See what they come up in 19, and see where we're going, and make adjustments by 2020 based on what they can and realize here. The Option Three is similar. It's phasing it in. I just worry about the public perception using the Long-Term Care Redevelopment Reserve. And it's just that it was money set aside from the debenture lien manner for the future purposes of a capital build, and now to use it for operating. I just worry about, I believe we have demonstrated in staff reports that not all that funding would be required for that redevelopment to meet the debenture and everything. I just worry about the perception of how that looks if we run to that now. So that's where I lean more to the Option Two, but that's my personal feelings, and you politically can look at this differently.
Bob Pringle, please. But I've got eyes in the back of my head.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. And thank you, Kevin. You've confirmed my simple thoughts, that it would be a continuation of '18, but it is getting us into '19. And so I would be in agreement of Option Two, and I'll make that recommendation if we're looking for a motion.
Okay, that's on the floor. Counselor Greenfield is seconding that motion. Any other, Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, Warden. Holiday.
There's too many MCs around here, so, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm not actually in favor of any of them, but I would say that Option One is actually, in my view, as Counselor Burley has indicated, the more transparent option, lets the taxpayers know exactly what long-term care is costing the county. And so I won't be voting on option that's before you, but I truly believe that we need to start to take a, you know, a look at what it's costing the county to do long-term care and road business, because I know that in recent developments with the new government, that we were actually given a check for $2.3 million for a project, and they emailed us yesterday and said, return that, because we're not going to fund that anymore. So I think that more and more and more, provincial government is going to let the municipalities pay for, it's going to be a pay-as-you-go, and there's going to be very little to any subsidies or grants. So I think that it's high time that we started to show the taxpayers exactly what all these programs are costing us. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Who's next on, Counselor Columbus?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I've asked him this question, but I think it should be asked in public forum as well. If you can explain why the administration pay equity reserve is redundant at this point, and what this means in terms of available funds for other projects, or what could happen to that fund?
Yes, we've gone through, pay equity processes of each of our homes, and we were able back, this goes back to about 2008. We were able to settle two of the three homes, one we were not able to. We, and so what we did is, what finance staff recommended was a transfer to reserve based on what each of those homes got. So we used the basis of what those homes got, and then started putting that money away. We went years without getting to a settlement, and then it was agreed upon that they did not go back retroactive to that point. So that money then was saved by the county. So it was put away, thinking if we had to go retroactive back to 2009, that we would have turned over this money, but what was settled upon and negotiated upon was not that much impact. So it was, it just began kind of in 2017. So they didn't seek all that retro pay equity. So that's why it's been freed up in that reserve now.
Yes, you make a comment.
And going forward, it is going to be appropriately funded, so that there will not be a need for a reserve for that purpose?
We should be maintaining our pay equity agreements with each of those homes.
If I may?
Yes, you may.
Just one other quick point. I certainly agree in the transparency and accountability. The public definitely must know what the provision of long-term care means in terms of tax costs and the, in our tax levy. But if there is no other option for, or this is one option at least, that could real, put that, administer that reserve fund that was no longer needed, that has been accrued through taxation, back into, you know, a project, or into something that would cost taxpayers in another way, I see this as a viable option for using that administration pay equity reserve in keeping with a full disclosure of how and why going forward, so the public is fully informed. This is the cost of long-term care for our county, but this is how we're using money that has been saved in other avenues wisely.
I agree with, that's a good comment. Any other comments on this? So Option Two is, any further discussion? No further discussion? I call a vote, all in favor of Option Two. Clerk is taking account? Close, if any? It's carried, without me voting. Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. Good discussions. All right, we have two bylaws, the third one being dropped. Oh, that's the Plan A. Sorry, I thought that was Sienna. Plan A is the company that's being hired. Is that still needed, if you move with Sienna? Or that gives you an option? Yes, okay. All right, so we have three bylaws, which I will read into the record. 502-518, a bylaw to amend Schedule V of bylaw 4788-13, being a bylaw to regulate traffic and parking on highways within the Gray County road system. A bylaw 502-6-18, a bylaw to authorize entering an agreement to purchase certain assets, assume certain liabilities, and acquire certain lands in the municipality of Meaford in order to augment the Gray County housing inventory brackets, Golden Town. 502-7-18, a bylaw to authorize the warden and clerk to execute an agreement between the corporation of the County of Gray and Plan A Simco for supplemental long-term care staffing. I'll put that on the floor, those three bylaws. Counselor Columbus, second, Counselor McQueen. Any further, any discussion on those bylaws? Yes, Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. In looking at bylaw 5026-18 in relation to the Golden Town Agreement?
Right.
I note that the agreement that we've been provided has stroked out the clause that stipulates that we've all received appropriate legal advice. Why would we stroke that out? Have we received appropriate legal advice?
Question, right, okay.
Age of, four of the agreement form, point number 24.
You can speak to it, the clerk will speak to it initially.
This agreement was completed through our county solicitor, through the alliance, so the county has had it all reviewed by legal, yes.
So my interpretation is that I'm approving something that I acknowledge removing that clause, and I guess I'm fine with that, because I have not done a legal review, so I'm not acknowledging that I have.
Right.
On the county's behalf.
The county has done that. Any further?
Thank you.
Fair enough. Any other questions with regard to these three bylaws? Yes, Counselor Echols?
Just a point, intersection of Concession 5 Derby, it's on the 4788-13.
Right.
Is that dead-ended, or, I'm trying to figure out where that is.
Counselor Patrick Hoy, our Director of Financing, will give us a location map.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. That's the road that runs south of Mennonite Corners. We were just getting away from having a Mennonite Corners description, because it's kind of just a...
Right. It's not technical enough.
So is that the intersection of King's Highway 6 and 10? I thought it was only 6 that went, okay.
You've been located now? All right. I understand the reason that Pat has brought forward as well, so, okay. We can rename it at some point in time through a motion, but today we won't. All right, all in favor of the three by, well, sorry, sorry, Counselor Fosbrook.
Thank you. So I just wanted to ask if staff has any additional comments in relation to 5027, and what we believe that agreement will bring to the table for long-term care.
Okay, Lynn, do you want to comment on that? I know you're replacing somebody, so...
Yes, what that agreement will do is provide us with another option when we've exhausted all options internally to replace staff. So right now, we have a process that we offer shifts out to staff, and then we offer shifts out for overtime, and there's cases where we can't even fill those. So this will give one more option to call.
So if I may, this is a service provider, a personnel agency, that we have not used at all in the past?
We have not used this one. And the reason we chose this one is they're able to provide registered nurses, registered practical nurses, and personal support workers, and they only service long-term care. In the past, we've been successful in finding somebody that can look after registered staff, limited success with that, limited success with PSWs, and they also serve hospitals, community care, and long-term care. So we're hoping these folks will, with their focus on long-term care, they'll serve us better. They also look after training their staff on long-term care when they hire them, so they already come to us with a certain level of knowledge, and we just have to do our home-specific training when they arrive.
Thank you for that.
Right, and when we did review their inputs at a previous council meeting. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the three motions, bylaws, sorry? That's passed and carried. Okay, thank you very much for that. We got through those. Now it's time for good news and celebrations. Open the floor, going around the table. Anybody have good news and celebrations that they want to bring forward? Counselor Body?
This Saturday, Harbor Fest on...
Downtown, along the harbor, both sides of the harbor, family activities on the west side. East side is going to be microbreweries making presentations. Musician, I'm forgetting his first name, Stats is his last name, Six Nations was on one of the TV competitions, very well-respected, as well as a tragically hip cover band will be playing, starting, I think, at 1:00 in the afternoon, Tug of War and Things in the Water, ending at about 10:00. So it should be a good event if anyone's looking for something to do around the harbor. The beer part of it is all around the Mud Town Brewery, so it should be really interesting. Thanks.
Exciting. Any other good news or events? Yes, Counselor Echols?
This weekend, in the town of Durham, there's the initial Arts Fest. Festival's going on Friday night, and all day Saturday, culminating in a street dance, Queen Street. From John Sadler to Lampton will be closed off, the municipal parking lot for a street dance. Cover band is there. Art Fest, mostly developing for our artisan community. Many of the storefronts will be displaying art, craft work, and a lot of children's-type functions on the main street and through the library. So that is on all day Saturday and starting on Friday night.
Thank you for that. Anybody else have anything? I don't see anybody representing Gray Roots, but I know Gray Roots has a big event this Sunday, which is the Antique Car Show, so we read that into the record, that Gray Roots is continuing to add programs quite often as we move through the summer. Okay, that, if that's, if nothing further in good news, then we can move to adjournment. Counselor Patterson, Counselor McQueen. We are adjourned from this council meeting.